Budget work session of been here as Madison Board of School Trustees. Want to thank everybody who's here in attendance, even those who aren't compelled to be here. Thank you. Also want to take a moment and thank everybody who's joining us via our live YouTube stream. We appreciate you tuning in tonight for budget work session. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. It's 6:01 PM. First order of business is the adoption, the agenda. Core members, any additions or changes? Administration? Motion to approve?
I'd say move a second.
All those in favor of what I? Any opposed vote nay? Motion carries by vote of five to zero and we'll move on to the presentation of the 2026 budget and Dr. Short, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Riley and members of the board. I am excited to welcome our Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Matt Quaid. And he will present the budget from the year beginning January 1, 2026 and ending December 31, 2026. Mr. Quaid, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Short. Good evening, President Riley, Board of Trustees and our esteemed guests that are joining us here and online. I'm excited to present the 2026 budget to you. Dr. Keely told me no more than two hours, so I'm gonna do my best to keep it under.
Let's get something. We're missing four.
We'll make it quick and informative. So looking, first, we like to start off with the Business Office staff, highlight our excellent staff. It's been a joy getting to know everyone, learning their strengths. We've got some new faces and we've got some existing faces and new spaces. And so we're excited for the opportunity that brings of some cross-training and then to execute at a high level. They've seemed to have always done that and I think we're in a good position to continue that. For the budget, that's all right. We're working off of our best assumptions at this point, right? We haven't finished ADM count. That won't be until October. We're still finalizing insurance numbers and some larger figures. So this is our best estimate of revenues at this time. I also want to tremendous help, Dr. Keely. You might notice these slides look very familiar. Lisa Zachary in our office did a wonderful job helping me find information. Then Debbie Pletcher and Donna Magg, same as I'm learning the place and where things are kept. They were very helpful in putting some of these numbers into this presentation. And as always, our objective remains to maintain expenses within the revenue stream provided, I think revenue stream provided is a big key point there. We'll talk a little bit about SEA one and the impact of that. We'll also talk about just the revenue streams in general and kind of what all those pieces, pieces make up that pie of revenue for Penn Harris Madison schools. And then as always, just to focus on our programs and services to our students, we provide excellent programs and we've seen excellent results and we can want to continue that as well as providing a competitive compensation package for all of our employees. Our people are our greatest asset and we want to honor and retain them. So those are the objectives and goals as we walk through this budget presentation. We'll share a little bit of changes as we review the budget again, kind of what's happening in each of these funds. What are some factors that are influencing the budget? And then we'll discuss next steps when we wrap up. I want to start with, as we talk about these, these four funds and kind of where those revenue sources do come from, just to kind of give us a better understanding of what factors influence. So the education fund is driven by state funding. Roughly 50% of our state's budget goes to K-12 education. And that drives roughly 60% of our revenues for the school district. And it's a very simple formula. It's the, well, the the funding formula is not overly simple, but there's a dollar amount per student and then there's the students enrolled in the district and that drives our revenue. The operations fund and debt service fund are driven by our local levy. And what the local levy is, is our net assessed value. And I think assessed value is important. Gross value will stay very large. Assessed value is after all the deductions and things start to come into play, that gives you your assessed value times your tax rate. We've been very consistent with the tax rate and as you'll see, we can, we plan to be consistent with that tax rate in this proposed budget. And so as that assessed value is impacted, so is the levy or the revenue for that fund. And then the rainy day fund is really funded by any local source of ours, right? And so we'll talk a little bit about that as we move through this as well. So it doesn't have a designated funding source like these other three. It's, it's really driven by the strategy of the school district. Education fund, excuse me. So we're, we, right now are looking at 10,944 students is what we plugged into the calculator for, to project revenues. There's two student counts, right? We'll, we'll have one in October and another one in February. Those often change looking, we'll look at the numbers. Some are higher than others. There's no real rhyme or reason to it, but just good to know it does affect funding as we move. All the other student counts are, are constant. So we've just taken what we had last, what they paid us last year and projected that into next year in terms of the number of students that they funded in these different programs. And you'll see those listed as we move. We also have revenues from July to December staying constant and point that out because once that October count hits, right, they're going to adjust our funding accordingly to the number of students that are certified in the district. We've projected in a three and a quarter percent increase in there. We've also projected in some health insurance costs that will likely increase as we kind of look at the, our experience in the health insurance. So the state funding formula, you have your basic tuition with complexity. We're around $7,200 per student, virtual students, 85% of that. And so we do have around 100 or so virtual students that we count in there. That's included in that 1094 or 10944 number. We also have academic performance grants, which is driven really academic outcomes, right? Graduation, different pathways. There's different indicators that pay on that. Special education or exceptional education here is to help support those students and programs. As well as there's some federal funding that comes in to help support that program. Career and technical education, those your vocational programs, again, that comes into play a lot with your career pathways and different academy models that we have here. Check those boxes and the state has a matrix that determines what programs to get what level of funding. And so it can vary depending on what students are enrolled in what programs. And then finally, the NESP, it's the non-English language speakers program. It used to be a separate grant. It's now rolled into the state funding formula. That is the same as it was the year before. So if we look at.
Do you want us to ask questions now or at the end?
I think it's best to go ahead and ask the questions as they come to mind.
Sure. Any questions I can answer? Yeah.
7,270 is the number this year. Do you know what it was last year?
Uh, it's, I don't have that written down. It was in the six, high sixes.
Six, nine, eighty.
Yeah, that sounds. Two percent is what the state.
Thank you.
Yeah. So again, ADM drives our revenue in this fund. And so it's important to just look at trends. I think PHM has remained pretty steady, constant. There's not a lot of volatility in our enrollment, which is a good thing. I think our largest swing throughout this time period was about 5%. And so that makes budgeting and planning a little bit easier when you're not having drastic swings in your ADM. So when we plug that 10,944 number into a state calculator that the IDO provides, you can see there that we're projecting about a three and a half percent increase in funding in the education fund going into the 26 budget cycle. The second half of that 26 budget cycle will be impacted by the biennium, right? There'll be a new funding amount per student that will kick into place. Another 2% is what they're projecting. So we feel confident that this is a pretty good assumption, conservative assumption around revenues. This is a bit. The 6,729 obviously is not the same number as we shared. That's the very basic formula. There's other, the complexity and those other pieces that come into play as you build this. This is really to show, also, I forgot to update the, the year. Lisa did update these numbers for me, but it really shows that we do more with less here, right? The complexity and some other factors that the state pays per student. We don't receive some of those or not as much of that. And so the funding per student, we do more with less here at PHM. So if we look at, yes, sorry. Yes.
So that's just the ba- basic tuition support. So like, for example, Elkar doesn't, they don't have a complexity. That's just their basic starting point. And then they have the complexity on top of that, or I'm just trying to make sure I'm looking at apple to apple.
Yes, and yes.
I mean, our number over here is 7270, over here it's 6729.
Right.
And I'm just trying to say, so is there 7114 or 6729 or 7270?
Our, our number here is accurate based on the state formula calculation that we're working with. Again, when you talk about the funding formula that the state puts together, where these numbers are pulled is going to change kind of that ADM number. So it's not apples to apples to your point. We do, again, so the complexity piece works on your free and reduced as your, your primary driver of the complexity number. The more students that are for reduced, the larger that number is.
Be very, you know, cart probably has a much higher complexity.
Correct.
Number than we do.
Right.
I'm just trying to figure out, is that in the 7388?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Keely, Dr. Keely.
Yeah, that, that top number on the two comparisons. The back of one, that top number is the basic grant. The basic grant does have a foundation number, which is the same across the state of India. And then you have the complexity that our 30, 34% free and reduce will bring that up a little bit, but not nearly as high as Elkar and South Bend. That's why their numbers.
So if it was like South Bend, I mean, what would their 7270 number be?
Today?
Do we, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to compare where we are.
Yeah, they're, they're probably, they're closer to $8,000 a kid. Their complexity added in there.
But it's fair to say that of all the schools, comparatively speaking, we're.
Yeah, we have the lowest complexity index. And so our number, our foundation number plus the complexity does not match is high of a dollar figure per kid.
I guess the big difference in the special ed grant, if somebody has higher or lower.
That would. Yeah, that's, that is very specific to IEP challenges, wherever they're coded.
Asked differently. It should be interesting to know our 7270 comparison to this group of schools, just again, just because you're saying the community, you want to be saying the right thing.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the all budgets in gateway, which is the public record and all those, all of those are going to be a year, sometimes two years in arrears before they post them again. So by the time we get to January and we do the finance meeting, we certainly will have those numbers updated because we'll have all the approved budgets. And so we get that dollars in January for everybody.
So then can we do our 6980 number compared to since our last year's number and you'd kind of assume.
Yeah, we can make three columns.
You know, I'm just trying to compare where we are to, to the other local schools.
Yep. You can get that.
Thank you.
I will add, as I was looking at this, the academic performance, special education grant, those other grants that fall underneath the, the full total are included in that original ADM number, right? That's 7,000, whereas they're not in this. So this is just complexity in the foundation. So that, that's why those numbers are different. And so then if we look at our 2425 and what we're advertising for our 2026 budget, you'll notice our advertised were slightly lower than our budget order for 2025. And that is, we, we asked for quite a bit in 2025, certainly more than we needed. And we approved for quite a bit, certainly more than we need. And so that's just really an adjustment to bring it back into truer levels where what we're actually spending. As you can see there, our expenses year to date through June, we're at $42 million, 42.2. And so projecting that forward, we feel that 88 is sufficient to meet the goals that we have as a district. And we will also continue to, with a, with a plan to transfer that 750, 750,000 a month, which is $9, $9 million a year, which is just at that 10% threshold, not threshold number. So next, we're going to tell you, any other questions about the education fund? We're going to dive into the operations and then our debt service, both of which are driven by our levy. The revenues are driven by levy and which is, that's where SEA one really comes into play. If, if it's a large sweeping bill, I'm not sure the state's seen such a complex bill around one issue and I don't ever. So there's a lot of moving pieces here, but I think the very basics to understand this, what, how this can affect us is if you look at the assessed value, again, net assessed value times our tax rate. That's the revenue or the levy that we're, we can draw. There's lots of factors that play into that, lots of little lovers in between. But we see, working with policy analytics, who is a top state advisor in this, they do a lot of assessment forecasting throughout the state. They're, they're involved with legislators and projecting kind of what these bills will do as they're talking through them. They've run a projection for Penn Harris Madison. And as you can see, we're, we're anticipating that our assessed value, our net assessed value will drop in 2026 and continue to do so really through 2031. And right, so if you consider that calculation, if you have less assessed value in the same rate, that means less levy. That's how the math works. And so what you'll see a lot from a lot of school districts is they're going to increase their property tax rate. They're going to have to to maintain that, either maintain or continue to grow the levy at a pace that is, that they need to maintain their school district. And so we've been working hard to think through what does that mean for Penn Harris Madison? And I think we have a really great opportunity. We've done some wonderful planning here, long range planning. And we believe that we can maintain our current tax rate of that 92 cents while continuing to provide the same service, level of service and maintenance to our facilities as we always have. So we're very excited. I think we've got a great opportunity there. Our tax rate outside of Elkar's is the lowest by, Elkar beat us by a penny. But is the lowest around, I think for school districts our size, it's certainly very low. And so that's a wonderful asset that we have as a school district and it gives us the flexibility to kind of maneuver in these headwinds that the state's been throwing at us. So that's really important to know. We're in a great position to weather this and we'll still strive and maintain that excellence that we look for.
I got a question about the assessed value because everybody I come to in our area, their assessed values went up. And they counties have all these meetings. So why isn't ours going up here?
So we're waiting to see. That's one thing we don't have back yet, right? Is the true assessed value. I would agree, my tax bill or not my, my assessed value went up quite a bit as well. We don't. We don't have an impact on the assessor and how they assess property values. We do know that the legislation that was put in place will drive assessed values down. This is a representation of a, a projection for, uh, for the Harris Township and what it will do for those property tax owners. There is the three hundred dollar or ten percent component to that. There is oh. Yeah, so they continue to, sorry, they continue to lessen that. What the assessors do in terms of the actual property value is, you know, that's to their discretion. That's, I think, really what drove a lot of this legislation. It's not that school districts went out and up their property taxes and, and got hungry. It was that the assessed value rose so much. We look back at that formula, you maintain the same rate, your assessed value goes through the roof. And now schools and all local government are collecting more dollars than they had been able to in the past. And I think that was what really drove. And so it wasn't the local governments that were increasing your tax bill. It was the assessors that were assessing those properties.
And we pay property taxes a year in arrears. I noticed that you are projecting the loss through the advice from Policy Analytics, not for two thousand twenty-five, but for two thousand twenty-six, probably anticipating it's going to take a year for the legislation to kick in and for assessed values, because we do pay in arrears, to actually have a monetary effect on people's pocketbook. Is that basically what you're anticipating?
I would say it's accurate and it's also progressive and, and some of these deductions that you'll start to see. And so they, it goes from a dollar amount to a percentage of your home value and they, they have done that progressively through. And so that's why as you look at twenty-thirty-one, that's when it really, the assessed value hits its, its floor there before it starts to come back up. And then you'll see it, it, they're projecting it will start to grow just as it did after the caps went into place, right? And so to your point, Mr. Beeler, the assessed value, I think, will continue to grow. It's more the deductions that, that the state has put on for the property owners, not, not just, not just homeowners, but also business owners, the personal property tax for businesses will be close to eliminated. And so there's, there's a lot of moving pieces in this legislation. We're lucky, not lucky, we're, we're privileged to have a partner like Policy Analytics to kind of help, help us through that thought leadership and, and how we attack this and what we can anticipate as a school district.
Question. When does the, it's two years before the split off to charter private schools of the property tax? And is that shown on here anywhere, the impact to us on that?
It is modeled into this, yes. Uh, we did get a projection on that. It is de minimis, we'll say. We have very few students, certainly comparatively, but very few students that attend charters that are reside in Penn Harris Madison, which is a testament to the success and excellence that we've been able to achieve.
It's religious charter, everything, correct?
Just charter at this point, just charter. Um, there's some other talks of other legislation, but we can worry about that when they decide to put those in bills. So what does that do for our operations fund? Well, let's, let's talk about the rate, I guess, as a whole. You've got the operations fund and your debt service fund that make up that ninety-two seven-five of our tax rate. And so the operations fund, we, we, we hope to increase salaries or we plan to still increase salaries there. Again, the health insurance increases. Like we showed our assessed value, we're projecting a loss of about four percent. We did, uh, we are again, waiting to see what that assessed value actually comes back at once the, the tax bills are collected and the cap impact or loss, we think we have an opportunity to neutralize that or reduce it a little bit. And I'll talk a little bit how that would work. Our max levy growth quotient is four percent again, set by the state. That's as much as the operations fund can grow. And we plan to capture that four percent. That means we'll need to increase our operating tax rate, operations fund tax rate to capture that levy, which means there's the debt service. That's where we're going to try to realize some savings in our tax rate to maintain. And we'll talk more about that. Dr. Keely is working hard on plans around what that means for the district. Why the assessed value or why, why the loot loss are neutral in our cap? Other districts, other taxing units are going to need to raise their property taxes, their rates, so that they can capture the revenues that they help to, at least that's what we're assuming in this. And as our percentage of that tax, total tax rate shrinks in that pie, that means less impact on our operation, operating fund cap impact. And so I don't think it'll be huge, but it will be nice to see hopefully a reversal in that trend. Right now, we're roughly around two million dollars. I don't think it'll be anything drastic, but we should see a little bit of relief in that cap impact. This is our operations fund revenue, again, uh, pretty neutral. About two hundred thousand dollar increase enough to set the rate where we need to set it. I think that's part of the calculation here, you, your assessed value, right, times your rate equals your levy. So we want to make sure that we show enough need to generate the rate that's needed to make sure we capture the maximum levy that is allowed to us. And so pretty conservative with our miscellaneous revenues, if you will, to make sure that we maximize the property tax that we're able to collect, which again is capped one by the property tax caps and then again by your max levy growth quotient. Uh, so if we look at our twenty-five budget order and our twenty-six advertised, you can see we've advertised just less than two million more than we did the year before. Uh, you can see our six-month expenditures were about forty-five percent. So again, on track in terms of what we have appropriated for the twenty-twenty-five budget year. And then this is our capital improvements plan. Not a lot changed there. We will have the addendum for all the lease maintenance projects will be included in that capital projects plan that I believe is shared with the board and will be on, posted publicly online. And then we have our five-year bus replacement plan. Again, no changes there. Uh, we've, we've moved that forward. Trend, trend the costs appropriately. And that's what we've shared in our five-year bus replacement plan. Are there any questions around the operations fund? Right. So the debt service fund, um, you can see we've advertised seventeen million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. Uh, we've got general obligation bonds, we've got lease rental payments, common school fund loans, anticipated debt of two million, uh, which is reduced from previous years. Fees and then unreimbursed textbook expenses, that's no longer allowed. As if you might recall, we can no longer charge for that. We can no longer pull those dollars out of the debt service fund. And so I, yeah, it, it's, it's not a huge impact, but certainly impacts the way we think about our education fund and what we do with that, those resources. The rainy day fund. So again, this is, we, we have not asked for any expenditures to be appropriated from the twenty-twenty-six rainy day fund, but I do think it's important to note kind of our, our strategy for this. The naming rights and interest income from Everwise, we've been using to fund this. We would like to see a two, two payrolls worth of dollars in a rainy day fund, which is roughly seven million dollars. We just think that it's prudent as a district to have some flexibility for when, when or if things do happen. That's what it's there for, right? It's for the rainy days. And right now we sit at two point three million dollars. And so we'd like to continue to grow that with those funds. And that's really the plan moving forward, just kind of keep this plan we've, we have in, in place. So this is a look at our assessed valuation. Um, you'll see at the, well, you can kind of see there's a four percent decrease. Uh, we also had a decrease in twenty-twenty-four, which is unique, a lot of places saw.
Sorry, can I go back? On the rainy day, I mean, we were tenth of that number when I joined the board. What, do we have a projection on when we think we'll hit that two payroll with the interest?
Uh, it'll be a while. I think we, when I updated this, it was at two million dollars. So we put about a quarter of a million dollars in it since the last budget presentation. So at that pace, it'd be twenty years. And I doubt the payroll. Yeah, I was gonna say, that number would be twelve million, then so. Yeah. It's, it's progress, though. I will say that it's progress, moving in the right direction.
Why you stopped if you don't mind on the debt service fund? So help me understand if one believes that interest rates are going to go down. What is that? What's the interest rate sensitivity that we have?
That's really going to play into the payback models that we're going to be looking at when we go to sell these. I think uh, one of the slides that I don't believe is in here, we've got a waterfall, if you will, and it shows as debts roll off each year, kind of the amount of capacity we have. And so as the, as the interest rates fall, that's really, we can talk with our, our partners in Stiefel and, um, to kind of gauge how much, how fast we can pay. So I think that comes into play and, yeah, the longevity of the note and, and payment cycle, what you can capture in there. It also will reduce some costs and soft costs.
Mr. Beeler knows because it was, I think his idea, how we got the rainy day fund was in a environment of falling interest rates and being able to redo some refinancing that allowed us to get it. And I guess if one believes that interest rates are going to fall, maybe we have the opportunity to get to Mr. McCullough's answer quicker.
Potentially. I know, yeah, a lot of districts did that at that time. There was an opportunity. And there might be again. I think, you know, I would assume our rates are around five to six percent on some of our higher end. I don't know that, you know, depending on how low they get is, is the juice.
Overall interest rate sensitivity from both sides, because you're not going to be able to get the same thing from an income side that you've been getting as well. And then should we proactively be looking at the ability to? If interest rates go down, I know mortgage rates went drop yesterday, I think, or something. So I mean, I do send, there's pressure to move interest rates down.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see. We'll, we'll go to market here shortly with a, with a issuance and see if, if we've noticed it softening a little bit. There's certainly that opportunity. So again, our assessed value, uh, we're projecting it to drop. We did have a call with Policy Analytics, uh, not in the last week or so. And they did share that they were a little optimistic still. I think we're, we need to be conservative with our estimates there, but they were, showed some optimism that it might not be that full four percent. This is just an illustration. You can kind of see what property taxes did do. Um, after twenty-twenty-two, they really jumped a, a lot. And so again, I think that drove the state's focus on, and, and for this SEA one and why they felt that they needed to provide some relief for the, the property owner. This is looking at our tax cap impact. Again, we're projecting five percent. We didn't pull out. We didn't put that kind of projected savings potentially or, or in there. So hopefully that five percent is, you know, more four percent range. But again, being conservative, I think it's, we, we budgeted about a two million dollar estimated loss from tax cap impacts. Our budget order versus collection, we collect majority of our property taxes, uh, ninety-five percent in twenty-twenty-four. We're on pace to be in that high nineties number again, which is a good thing. Like, we like to get the dollars that are owed to us. Tax rates, these are from twenty-twenty-four. Again, this is just highlighting, uh, we have a very low tax rate. It's given us the flexibility of maneuver. In this, certainly in this environment that we are in, where legislature just seems to find a new way to go after property taxes. So in summary, I think it was, we talked a little bit at the last meeting, kind of talking about revenue, where it comes from, why it's so important for us. We need, we, we need money to spend money. We need to stay competitive as a school district to attract and retain our students. And so we've got education, operations, gifts and donations, rainy day fund, debt service, and our state programs kind of all wrapped into this chart. But I broke it down where you really have state revenue, which makes up sixty-one percent. So the number of students, time, the, the times the dollars, uh, that the state funds those students at is sixty-one percent of the revenue that comes into this district. The, the value of keeping and retaining our students, growing that student bases, you know, or, or maintaining it is, is important. That's the biggest driver, right? Attracting students. Twenty-eight percent of that is driven by local property taxes. So as, you know, SEA one impacts our opportunity or our availability to draw revenue from local property tax, that's roughly twenty-eight percent of that pie that we bring in. Six percent is from other revenue sources, state, uh, programming, uh, grants, the different donations and things like that. And then five percent is federal programs. And I know there's a lot of noise at the federal level and what they're doing with the Department of Education and what that means for title grants and all those things. And, you know, to put that in perspective of what that means for Penn Harris Madison, that's about five percent of the revenues that we receive. Um, and again, those are multiple different grants within that five percent. Uh, but that just kind of gives you a sense of what sort of exposure, I guess, we would have to each of those, any of those sorts of changes. So if we look at our twenty-twenty-six advertised budget, you'll see that we are only advertising about less than a percent, uh, increase. Uh, that's really driven by the education fund. Again, we're advertising less than what we did in previous years, just because that was more than enough, all right? And so we're just trying to get that back into a more prudent range. Our levy, you'll see that we advertised a lower debt service levy, um, and increased that operations levy. Again, the, that waterfall effect that we have in our debt, uh, cycle allows us to be very flexible. And we can really each year kind of layer in as much as we see, as much as, as, as necessary. Uh, so the rates, you'll see there, uh, twenty-four and twenty-five, we were at ninety-two seven-five. Uh, we, we are advertised right now at a dollar, uh, six fifty-nine. We intend that rate to be ninety-two seventy-five, uh, when we come back in January and talk to you about the seventeen eighty-two notice. And so, uh, again, the, the mechanics of the tax rate, you always want to make sure you advertise a rate that is high enough to maximize that your levy available to you. And then our budget timeline, um, we published a gateway, our Form Three, we have, uh, put those plans on the website. We are currently conducting a public hearing. If I known this was animated, I would have put a check that comes in right now, but I did not. Uh, or I'm sorry, we'll have our public hearing, uh, next week. Um, and that will allow the public opportunity for comment on, on this board presentation. September eighth, we will ask that the board adopt the budget along with the capital projects plan and transportation or bus replacement plan. And then we will upload those to the gateway and wait for our seventeen eighty-two to be returned sometime in December. And again, at that time, we'll adjust to ensure that tax rate is at that ninety-two seventy-five. This is the Form Three that's been published. Again, you'll see the debt service levy ask is down and our operations levy ask is up. And that concludes my budget presentation. If there's any questions.
Or if there was any other questions, comments?
If you think about what we've been doing now, years from now. What, what should we be thinking about?
We will continue to see RSS value drop. Um, there's probably some more threat in that as well, I think, at the legislative level. We'll see what conversations are had downstate. But, um, so I think being very prudent with our, our dollars, we've done a wonderful job of providing top-class facilities and a focus on maintenance and upkeep as opposed to, as opposed to, but maybe, um, instead of, you know, additions and, and new facilities. We have wonderful facilities, right? And so just maintaining that level of excellence, making sure that the parking lots are paved and that the walls are painted and that, um, it's welcoming and safe environments for our students is very important. We will be in a wonderful position, I believe, as this starts to trend upward in the next five years or so. Because we won't have to move that tax rate, I think, like a lot of other places, we'll see. Um, and we'll start to realize some of those kind of. And we'll start to realize some of those kind of booms that we saw in the last few years, right? As assessed values went up, you had the influx of S R dollars, right? There was kind of a windfall for public schools there for those, those few years, twenty-one through twenty-four-ish. And so I think we'll be positioned to take advantage of that as that changes because we can, we have the opportunity to be conservative at this point, right? And kind of be intentional about where we're, where we're putting our dollars.
To me, as I look at this and listen to your presentation, we have to be more than eleven thousand from students. Lower we get from eleven thousand number, much more, less comfortable. One would get, the more you get above eleven thousand, I understand capacity and stuff. And so you can't, you can't get fifteen thousand, but that eleven thousand almost seems like a, if we don't get near that number, that seems to put a ton of pressure on everything else. Do you agree with that or disagree?
We've done a very good job of maintaining student teacher ratios, maintaining staffing. I think one of the things I learned early in this business was, you know, it's a, a position is hard to get rid of, right? And so we've been very intentional about the programming we've offered and the hires we've brought on. To your point, as we add students, there is always that kind of sweet spot. Certainly eleven thousand is not a bad kind of benchmark to look at for the school district. Let's see with birth rates and all the fun stuff that goes on there, but yeah.
But I look at the facilities are fantastic facilities and they're very easy, isn't the right word, but to continue to maintain our facilities, the way they are and continue to getting below that eleven thousand dollar, eleven thousand student number would seem to put just a ton of pressure on us. And I guess that would, you know, we've, I look at this whole thing and I'm saying, there's eleven thousand students. We, we, we have, we have to continually focus on trying to, to hit that number to be able to, to maintain the excellence that we have today.
Agreed.
Prouful discussion and it places in my mind a few issues that I'd like to hear more about when we come back in December for the budget order approval. Certainly refinancing has been discussed tonight. Intentionality and investment has been discussed tonight. Naming rights was briefly discussed. I didn't hear much about grants and, and Mr. Quiet, I'm not trying to put you on the spot because this might not be under your umbrella. But there have been times that PHM has launched incredibly worthwhile initiatives, thinking the, the learning communities, the small learning communities, because we got millions of dollars in grants. Do we have intentionality in grant writing? Do we need assistance in grant writing? Are we doing everything that we can to grab every available dollar? Is, is there anybody who from the administration might be prepared to discuss that? Or is that something that we can hope to learn more about when we come back in December? Because I just know from our own history that obtaining grants has been extremely beneficial financially for us.
I'm happy to jump in for a minute. So President Riley, if you recall, there was one particular year where we received over $700,000 from the Department of Education on three different grants. In particular, Penn High School received one, Grissom received one, and then we received a big one for literacy. And that was all S R funded. So those were fabulous dollars to be able to apply for, and they were competitive grants. And we received those. I do believe that the S R dollars have all now dried up. But to your point, I had a conversation about a week and a half ago with someone outside of the district a little bit to kind of look to see what some potential national grants might look like. The difficulty sometimes in a Penn Harris Madison situation is we might not qualify for some of those grants just based on our student makeup and the fact that we are a higher performing district. So you just have to find the right ones that you can apply for. But that is definitely something that we will continue to look for.
Other questions or comments?
I just think to go along with what you, you're talking about, Mr. Riley is revenue generation in general. We probably have an opportunity to be more intentional. What is our, what is our opportunity budget for naming rights? What is our opportunity budget for grants? To, you know, if you put a number out there that you're going after, it's more likely you'll get to it than if you don't have a number you're going after, right? And so it seems like to me, just thinking about what, because we can't control what the state does. They're going to do whatever they do, but we can't control that other revenue pieces. And I just think this, maybe if we had some intentionality to that, would force us to think more about.
I think that's, that's accurate as well. I met with Mrs. Termaum last week and we talked about some ideas and suggestions. So we are starting to look at those and we'll hear more from what, you know, their group is thinking as well. But I do think that there, there are ways that we can think a little bit more creatively about some revenue generation. And I do want to say, on behalf, on behalf of the work of both Zach and Dr. Keely and the whole department, when we had our conversation with Policy Analytics last week, they were incredibly excited about what they saw from Penn Harris Madison numbers. I think they have done multiple presentations across the state for various school corporations. And they said and praised the flexibility that we will have because of the prudent way that we have approached our budgeting process over the last several years. And the fact that we will be able to pull a couple of different levers and be able to look at things differently. That will be a boom for us, where I think some other school corporations, the impact of SEA one will be potentially devastating on, on what they do and how they operate. So I'm very, very thankful for our business department and their expertise in what they're doing.
Gary's comment, I think, you know, one, one thing as we look at the next few years is the private sector and education is going to get certainly more and more competitive. I mean, it was kind of robust during COVID and I think it's quieted a little bit, but there's, they're certainly getting some help. And I think we need to do a, a, step our game up in marketing. I mean, when I was looking at Gary and I were talking today at the latest test results, we do a phenomenal job of comparing ourselves to the other big public schools and we usually end up at the very top. You know, let's tell the public how well we compare against those private schools as well, because we, we kicked butt there as well too, when it, when it be compared to them. And I think that's important. People think, oh, I'm just, you know, go to the private school, I'll get better education, more focused on this or that. And here we are, you know, beating them as well. So, and that goes down to, you know, fighting for the ADM in our, in our district. And I think marketing, you know, one other comment that was made this spring during a Dr. Thacker event was Dr. Jenner had mentioned we're number one in the country and credited, college credited, you know, and I didn't, she didn't go into the details, but you know, that's another thing that just continue to, to brag and market why, why if you live in this district, this is the number. So it hit Gary's eleven thousand. We need sixteen more.
It's no longer the students in our district. It's students and it's students. Wherever they are, you gotta continue to market.
I agree with what they're saying. That, that's one thing, when it's thinking about it this summer, is there's so many little schools starting up, probably church schools, but they're looking for students. And that might be kind of rough to, when it comes to religious school. We gotta have good tactics. But I, I don't know, I, there, the one school I think is going to go backwards more, where we've got quite a few. I don't want to name it.
All right. Well, I too think it's very important to know that while SB one is going to hurt public education statewide, it is going to hurt us less differentially than it is other school districts. I don't delight in that, but I am very pleased that we have a, a administration here that's been proactive over the last few years, anticipating these pitfalls and anticipating these legislative changes, making sure that our house is going to be financially sound. Thank you, Dr. Keely, for all that you've done. Ms. Quiet, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. I do look forward, I think there have been some wonderful suggestions being tabled. I really liked the, the comment from Mr. Fox about, let's see some opportunity budgets, particularly as they pertain to grants and naming rights and financial refinancing and intentionality and investment. I'd love to see that because you're exactly right, our ceiling is only as high as we set it. So if we set it high and reach, strive to reach it, we'll go farther than where we are now. Although I think all of us can agree, we're very, very pleased with what the administration's done. Thank you, Dr. Short. Thank you, Mr. Quiet. And of course, for your presentation tonight, we really appreciate you. I know you haven't been on the job long, but we, we, I know that you took some questions that you may or may not have been anticipating. You did a great job. We appreciate it. Lisa, thank you. Lisa Zachary, we thank you very much for all of the work you've done for our business service department. And Dr. Keely, your legacy, of course, precedes you. And we appreciate you and all of you've done. Board members, any, anything else before we wrap up and adjourn? There's no further business before the board, so I'll take a motion to adjourn the budget work session.
I so move.
I'll lose a favor vote. I, any votes vote name? Motion carries by a vote of five to zero. We're adjourned at six fifty-one P M.